And Plan Director's Report.
Yes, I wanted to let you know that the, we expected at one point to have the code for community code enforcement before you tonight, but the council at its last meeting had a full agenda and so they've deferred it. It appears now it's going to be first reading for them in early January. So we thought possibly it would end up on the 19th, but our best reconnaissance at this point that Ms. G. and I have done looks like early January. So it'll be coming to you either later in January or early February. So, so I wanted to let you know that. We have had resignation. I mentioned that Garrison Kitt has moved back to Virginia Beach finishing up his work with Virginia Tech, but we found a way to keep him onboard as a part-time term employee through the end of the fiscal year. And he'll be able to help us continue to have access to our computer and do hopefully more planning work on these small area plans. So while this will slow some things down, I think we, hopefully we can, this will be successful, and I think it will be after our meeting last week, to have him continue to work on those specific things. We're going to be recruiting for our permit person this month, hopefully filling it before the first of the year. Also, we have had filing for a subdivision, a two-lot subdivision, I believe it's 503 East Columbia, that we'll be looking at. It's an existing house that will remain on a large lot and a smaller lot be carved out of that. So that's something that'll be coming forward. In terms of development, the hotel that was approved, we've gotten through all the building permits. They have some, they have some issues working out details of their bids on the project, and so they're not ready to start right yet, but we've done all we can. And so it's, it'll move forward as they move forward and go to closing. We understand there's been a closing on the financing for 24 Hour Fitness, the owner financing, so that should, we hope, be going forward soon. Again, I think the good thing is we're finding ourselves in a position where we're getting our stuff done and we're not holding anybody up. It's really up to them to move forward. So that's, I feel very good about how the staff has worked together in our department and with others in the, in the city to have that kind of an approach. We are looking forward to a work session with you all on the 19th. Since we don't have any public hearing items, it could be devoted to your annual program. We would look to do an update of where we are on the comp plan and the small area plan, get some feedback from you. The notes from the event we had in October have been put together and we're going to have to try to summarize those and have those for your reaction and thoughts. So I think we can have a good evening's work on the 19th and cover some items and plan ahead for the, for the coming year. Dennis Washington, pleased to report is back in the office, covered from, covering from foot surgery, and that's helped us out. On a personal note, our building official, Doug Fraser, lost his father last week, and just wanted to let you all know that. So that's all I have at this time. One last thing, I forgot. We have contacted Arlington County to see if we can get one of their persons, Joan Kelsch or some other person, to do a briefing for us in the coming year on LEED. I know, Mr. Lawrence, it was one of the things you had expressed interest in, so we'll, we'll work on, see if we can't have a session during the coming year to get up to speed on that and also letting them know of our goal to have several LEED-certified buildings. So work with them to see if we can have a good program on that in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Any questions for Mr. Snyder? Ms. Hockenberry?
If any of the commissioners have not been up in the planning department, the overhaul has been really beautifully, beautifully done. The front counter now looks really great, and the conference room, and of course Jim's office, but the whole staff up there has really done a great job of working together to brighten and make their environment very, very nice.
Any other comments?
I agree, it does look much nicer up there. I did want to ask, did staff get to see the plan for the giant parking lot where the BB&amp;T is going to go in? I, I don't go to Giants Eye often, but I went a couple times over the last two weeks, and the, they have fenced it off, obviously, for construction, but it is amazingly difficult in that parking lot. I can't imagine what it was like around, right up to Thanksgiving, or what it's going to be like closer to Christmas. But they have it so, the two entrances don't connect anymore, and so people are probably having to go all kinds of odd directions. It's just, I don't know, I think staff might want to go up and just look at it, because I think it could be a safety issue.
Appreciate the heads up on that. I haven't seen it personally, but we'll look into it.
Yeah, I didn't know if staff was aware of how they fenced it off. It's, I, and maybe that that's the only way they can do the construction, they need to do it. It's unfortunate they had to wait, you know, they've had that approval for a while, that they've waited till, upright on the holidays to do this.
I know we've had a number of folks coming in who were, I don't know if they determined this until recently, who was going to do the demolition, because I know there were folks coming in, you know, different people coming in talking about whether they were going to, who was going to do the demolition of the existing building, so we'll check into it. Appreciate the heads up on that.
Yeah, just, just look at the flow of it, because I think, it just looks like it's going to be rather dangerous. I was, cars are just diving all over the place, and they're going through the gas station in some cases, trying to get out, and, because it's just, it's basically blocked whole sections of that parking lot.
It's not even rectangular. It's got a very strange shape to it.
It's kind of like a web.
Yeah.
It has pieces coming off.
Okay.
But like I said, that may be what they have to do to do the construction, I'm not sure.
We'll, we'll look into it, but I appreciate your, letting us know your experience of it. I haven't, I haven't seen it myself, but we'll take a look this week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Snyder? Now, seeing that we don't have any old business, so we're going to move on to new business, the 610 Fulton Avenue subdivision of Woodland Lot 25A Block F, application number 20110822, and the action today is preliminary and final approval of the subdivision, and I assume we have a staff report to begin.
Yes, thank you. The subject of this subdivision, back on September 14th, there was a re-subdivision for this property, which is 610 Fulton Avenue, and that created three new lots at that time from the existing configuration, Lot 1A, 2A, and 25A. So this proposed subdivision further resubdivides just Lot 25A, it was created at that time, into two separate lots that would consist of Lot 25B and Lot 25C. So the proposed subdivision is, is to create two lots from that one lot, and they would retain Lot 25B for the existing historic house that's there, and that, and those would meet the minimum lot requirements, and then some. The other existing lots, fronting on Fulton Avenue, Lot 1A and 2A would remain the same and are not subject to this application. The staff has reviewed the subdivision, and they have no further issues, subdivision meets all the zoning requirements. The city's engineering department was looking for some final survey monument-related work to be done on the survey work that's related to these plats, and so the applicant has resubmitted. The plat before you reflects those updates, but they're still under review by staff, because we just received them last week. So in any approval this evening, I would recommend that there would be a staff administrative review contingent on those pending engineering comments being reviewed and approved. So tonight, the staff's recommending the planning commission give both preliminary and final approval of the subdivision, subject to this administrative staff review. So thank you.
Mr. Fuller, did the applicant want to make a statement? As usual, can you state your name and the address for the record? Thank you.
Sure. My name is Joey Randhawa. I'm representing ASR Designer Homes, the owner of the property, who are under discussion. We're here today for the subdivision of Lot 25A. We'll be subdividing into lots 25B and C. This would create one new lot for us. The historic house will remain on Lot 25B, and then I would plan to build a house basically on 20, 25C. As we had discussed previously, I will be marketing to sell Lot 25B, which contains the historic house, along with Lot 2A, which is a lot that is on the corner of Lee and Fulton, which has the large tree. This would create one, the entire property then for sale would be about 23,235 square feet. It'd have 181 feet of frontage on Lee Street and 94 feet of frontage on Fulton Avenue. I'd put the property up for sale today. Everything will be available on all the websites this evening or tomorrow morning. I have listed the property for sale on many of the websites that Mr. Luthrithon suggested and that I have done my own research on. It'll be under the Preservation of Virginia, Dr. Sarah, the person you recommended. It'll be at thehistoricproperties.com. It'll be on the MRIS and multiple listing, and Realtor.com. I've also been in contact with the Historic Falls Church, with Keith Thurston and Paul Barkley, and the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust, with Mike Nardolili. We have put the property, the two lots and the house for sale for 1.124 million. This is basically the City, City of Falls Church assessed price of the lots and the house. I have also done an independent appraisal, and it basically came out to the same price. Our goal remains the same, to sell the house and the two lots to someone who can restore the house, and hopefully that'll get done, and I will be building a house on Lot 1A and a house on Lot 25B. 25C, I apologize. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes, I'm glad to hear that you got it, finally got it on the multiple listings and everything. That's wonderful, good to hear. Thank you. And all the other properties and all the other groups, too. That's very good. Thank you.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yeah, I was just, I went by there the other day, and it looks like there's a house being constructed. Is that on the lot next door? I was just confused about.
Yeah, the house being built is currently at 306 North Lee. That's basically next to Lot 25B.
I would just also like to say I'm very happy to hear that you're, you know, actively marketing the historical property in conjunction with the, the lot with the tree on, and so that's, that's great that you've moved ahead on that. I had one question in regards to the retaining wall in front of Lot 2A. Can you give me an?
Sure. During the initial subdivision of the one we discussed, you know, months ago, the engineering, the staff with the City of Falls Church was very eager, adamant, yeah, they really want to remove the retaining wall there. It's in City of Falls Church property. The retaining wall is not in, with my property. So they would like to remove it so that they can have space for trees, or more sidewalk, or whatever they would like. It's your property. That is very possible, and we were going to do it, and it's in my plans for Lot 1A. I will be removing the retaining wall there. We have, we are not planning to remove it on Lot 2A because of the tree. If you remove the tree, then you're going to have to fix the grating on that lot, and that'll affect the roots of that tree. So under the arborist, the City of Falls Church arborist recommendation, he said not to remove the retaining wall if we keep the tree. If the lot doesn't sell for a year, and like a couple years from now, we end up building on that lot, then we will remove the retaining wall as per the engineer's request.
Okay, thank you.
Lawrence?
Could you just fill us in on where you stand with the arb as well?
Yes, sorry, I forgot to mention that. I applied today with Deborah to do the, we have a building permit right now to do the, restore the house. I applied today to do the teardown of the historical house, not because I want to tear it down, but just because I need to start that one-year time period. So I think our meeting is at the end of this month, and then they'll make their decision, which will be, I'm not even telling them I, it should be torn down. I just basically want to start the one-year time period. So that, that meeting will happen on December 22nd around that time, and then from one year from that date, the property will be for sale.
Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Loftrison?
I guess I just had, just one more question with the comment number five about the, provide adequate outfall analysis and conformance with the state minimum standard, and your response, again, no house has been planned for Lot 25C, and outfall analysis and previous area calculation will be submitted with the site and grading plan for this house if it is, if it is built there.
Correct. What, what the engineer would like to see is basically how much runoff water is going to come off building a new house here. So we did that for Lot 1A and 2A. I designed the entire house, did the whole landscaping plan, everything, for 2A, and now I'm not building a house on 2A. So it was a waste of thousands of dollars in time designing, designing an entire house and doing a site and grading plan. For 25C, what, I have not designed anything for it. I actually have a client who wants to buy the lot, and I will design and build them a custom home. So I, I will probably be building the house there, but I don't know what the house is yet, so I can't tell them exactly how much, what the calculations are for the runoff. We will meet all the Seabert requirements, which would be a lot coverage of less than 35 percent. We will meet that, and I did give Mr. Salali the outfall of the current status of the property. So as soon as we know what the footprint of it is, then I can give him the final results.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? No?
I want to thank you for getting everything listed on the historic sites and everything, because I, I think that that is going to be much more successful than maybe the general real estate listings. So we really do appreciate that you did list that, and that you're going to give the lot and the tree a chance to go together like that. So thank you. Can I get a motion? Oh, sorry. I need to open it, open it to public comment. Did we get, receive any letters, or have any speaker slips on this?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. So then we can go ahead and do a motion, please?
I move that the planning commission give preliminary and final approval, the subdivision application number 20110822, subject to administrative staff approval of pending engineering comments.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any comment on the motion? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Loftrison?
Yes.
Ms. Teeds?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, thank you, and we wish you good luck and get in the house and the lot sold together. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are on to our next item, Resolution TR 11-43, a resolution to amend the special exception for Pearson Square, 410 South Washington Street, to permit Body Dynamics a service use to occupy a portion of the retail use-only space and occupy the retail-only space for 20 years instead of 10-year maximum, and our action here is recommend this to the city council. And Mr. Fuller, will you be doing the staff report?
Yes, I think the applicant will probably have some comments to follow.
Okay.
The applicant is TMP Pearson Square LLC. They're the owners of 410 South Maple Avenue, which is Pearson Square, and they have a potential client, Body Dynamics, that wants to lease approximately 9,711 square feet of available vacant floor space at Pearson Square. The owner's application is pending on behalf of this potential tenant to amend the special exception for Pearson Square to allow a service use to occupy approximately half of the total building's first-floor commercial space, specifically almost 3,000 square feet of what is termed retail-only at this point. So we've got a combination of uses that are pre-approved for a significant portion of the vacant space, but not enough to accommodate this tenant. So they need about 300, 3,000 more square feet, this retail-only, converted over to retail service, sort of everything available. And then the secondly, there's a condition that any leases in this space be limited to 10 years that are non-retail, and that way potentially they could turn over and retail could get in when the market picks up, that kind of concept. So the request is for really two changes, and this is by the owners of Pearson Square for behalf of the applicant, is to have a 20-year lease based on all the investment that they'll have to put into the space to finish it off and to have it usable, and secondly, to change this retail-only portion of about exactly 2,968 square feet to allow for them to occupy, really, it's almost 70 percent of the vacant space and half of the total space down there, so be a significant tenant for the property. Previously, there was a work session on November 21st, in which it was a joint session with the council and the planning commission. You received a briefing and background information on this from the client and from staff. The council scheduled it for first public hearing on November 28th. They've now referred it to the planning commission, which is a mandatory referral and recommendation from you, also to the Chamber of Commerce, to the EDA, and they asked for a courtesy review by Vipus. And so the application and the, this staff report has been forwarded to all those bodies for scheduling on their next meetings, and the council has scheduled a final public hearing on this item on January 9th to have those recommendations available and make a final decision on this. Based on comments at the work session, a couple modifications were made to the resolution itself. Those are reflected in what's before you now and what went to first public hearing by the council. That's been reviewed by staff and the city attorney, and those amendments to it, which you can see in the attachment, they basically reflected, instead of having a general approval to allow these additional uses and term on the lease, they wanted to specify, this was for Body Dynamics, the current tenant, and their successors, or, and so forth, and their attorney helped craft that language, so it works for both, both of us, and our city attorney has reviewed it as well. And so that language is in there to reflect this user only or their successors. And then additionally, I, staff had attempted to pre-approve a little more space, because there's almost, I think, 3,000 square feet left that has venting for a restaurant, and I believe they're going to target that, and that's right in the center, just off to the right side of the foyer. So it's sort of a nice place for a restaurant, it's already vented. And then there was another space next to the existing office tenant, that's about 2,000 square feet, and staff had attempted for that 2,000 square feet to pre-approve that for optional service versus just retail-only use, but the, the indication from the work session was that we didn't want to pre-approve any, anymore at this time, and I think they preferred it to come back to them like this amendment, and so therefore we pulled that language out. Right now, there's about 8,000 square feet that was pre-approved. We need 11 to accommodate this tenant. We were trying to do 13 of the total 19,000 square feet. So anyway, so that language has been provided in the resolution as well, and so at this point, the planning commission's, the staff is recommending that they recommend the council approval of this resolution. Staff is in support of it. I will say that we would look for any guidance on the community considerations related to the existing tenant, Creative Cauldron, as indicated in the letter dated November 30th that you've received from Marty Mizerv. That's under staff review. Council's asked us to look at that request further and report back to them, so that's something that, that's in progress, but at this point, I don't have a staff position for you on it, so any guidance that you'd like to add to that, we would be happy to take that in consideration as, as we deliberate and report back to the council. So, thank you.
Mr. Fuller, do we have any questions for Mr. Fuller at this point, or would you like to hear from applicant first? Okay, would the applicant like to speak, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Ben Danforth. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to speak briefly, and then Jennifer Gamboa, who's one of the co-owners of the business, is going to speak. I'm going to keep my comments brief, since I believe all the members of the commission were at the meet, at the work session two or three weeks ago. This is an application to bring Body Dynamics into the space. Body Dynamics is currently in Arlington, and the business is growing, and they're looking to expand, and they think that relocating to Falls Church and Pearson Square in particular would be a great business opportunity for them. And even though there's been a determination that the use doesn't meet the retail, the, the term retail is its use in the existing conditions, we feel that it has a lot of characteristics that are consistent with retail. It's going to be very active use, there are going to be people coming at all, all hours of the day, and it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of activity within the space when people are walking by. They're going to see a lot of things going on. There's going to be items available for sale in the lobby area, and so there's going to be a retail component there. There's going to be an outdoor seating area, so people can wait outside, and so we think it'll really activate this area, which up to this point has, has not had a whole lot of life, so we think it'll, it'll really help accomplish that. I'll comment briefly on what Mr. Fuller touched, touched on, which is a letter from Mrs. Mizerv that was submitted last week. There are a couple things in the letter. One is operational, and that's, that's, those are, those are concerns that we can certainly address. The, in fact, one of the concerns, which is the noise coming from the corridor, there are already plans in place to put a door in that corridor, which we think will prevent the problems that have been occurring with the noise. It's not an area that can be totally sealed off for emergency egress purposes and service purposes, but the hope is that having a door there will address those concerns. And then with the, with the retail parking, that'll be enforced more stringently than it has been in the past, and that's certainly something that can be addressed. On the financial questions, the property owner is still looking at those. I don't have an answer for you right now on where the property owner stands on that, because the letter just came in at the end of last week. I will just say that the conditions in the lease for Creative Cauldron are the same as they are for other tenants in the space, as far as real estate taxes go and CAM goes, and it's, it's consistent with other commercial leases in the industry. And also, the, the property owner wants to see Creative Cauldron succeed, and it wants to work with it, and it has in the past, and it's been a corporate donor to the business, and it's gone above and beyond what it's been required to do in the past, and it's certainly taking the concerns that were raised on the financial front from Creative Cauldron seriously, and it's looking at them, and we'll have an answer at some point in the future on that. Thank you, and Mrs. Gamboa is going to make a few comments.
Thank you. I mostly want to say thank you to everybody here. We've been incredibly helpful and supportive through this process, and at this point, because everybody has been present at our previous meetings, I really open the floor to any questions you may have about our use and how we may, what, what business and what impact we may have on the business community.
Okay, thank you. I guess I have a quick question, Mr. Fuller, for you, because I, I was wondering with the request from Creative Cauldron, especially in regards to the property tax, I mean, can we make that type of change in the special exception without working with TransUnion first, or, or Transwestern, sorry?
Yeah, and my understanding is, I guess Transwestern has, has gone to Pearlmark Real Estate Partners now, technically, and that's what the application is, so I think some of my original correspondence had Transwestern on it, and the graphic has that, and I've actually corrected those at the request of the applicant. But to answer your question, we've started to look into that. We have a meeting of staff, that'll include the assessor and so forth. You know, whether, obviously, the, the taxes are generated on our end, and the request is for, you know, those to be waived, and whether it ends up being, you know, considered by the owners of Pearson Square or on the city side, you know, that's something we're going to look at, the options. You know, legally, I'm not sure what, you know, can be done in terms of potentially waiving taxes. You know, the assessor seemed to indicate there were some limitations to that, and so we're going to explore that this week, so find out what our options are, basically. Then in terms of, I guess, further looking at that, you know, we're going to look at the other issues as well. So at this point, we don't know, but we're going to look at what the options are, so we can get all those on the table and look at that. So the taxes are, we looked them up, they're, you know, the $6,000 range at this point for the property, so annually.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Any other questions for the applicant or Ms. Fuller? Ms. Hockenberry?
On that same subject, and the staff report on page four, right up the top. On that same subject, and the staff report on page four, right up the top, I think this all came about because of the last sentence there, this estimate reflects no real estate tax revenue, as those taxes are paid separately by the building owner?
That is incorrect.
Okay.
I was told that when the fiscal impact was run, which is generating $51,000 annually, it reflects a zero on the top of that fiscal impact run, when you see all the numbers, because that was the understanding when the EDA staff ran that, and so, I reflected that in my staff report. EDA staff came to me today and indicated that that was incorrect, and based on what Marty was saying in her letter, and that Creative Cauldron was paying their own taxes, that came apparent to us, and so, that statement is no longer correct, and the fiscal impact is actually significantly higher, because we were, the EDA staff had assumed that that was actually being paid by the owners of the property and not the tenants, that was their understanding, but if you look at net, double net, triple net in this case, taxes are always included in that to the tenant, and so, you know, by definition, so that is the actual correction to that, so glad you pointed that out.
So, Body Dynamics will be paying property taxes on your property?
That's correct. Under triple net or any of the three, and triple is what's being used in this particular property, they would pay their own taxes, yes.
And Edward Jones is doing the same.
That's correct, and Creative Cauldron as well.
Okay, do we have any other questions now? Okay, I'm going to open it to public comment. We have the letter from November 30th. Is there any other correspondence?
Also, at the dais tonight was a copy of an email. At the bottom of the page, it's indicated that it's from Sharon Horowitz, 217 Katie Court. She indicates that she's been a city resident for more than 10 years, and totally supports the idea of Body Dynamics being present at Pearson Square.
Okay, and we have one speaker slip, Gina Kachichi for Creative Cauldron. As usual, you speak your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Gina Kachichi. I live at 204 North Van Buren Street here in the city of Falls Church, and I am president of the Board of Creative Cauldron. Transwestern, although I think it's a new name now, this is news to me, the owner of the Pearson Square development is seeking a change in the use as permitted in the retail area in order to lease the space to Body Dynamics. Body Dynamics would be a wonderful tenant to have nearby, and Creative Cauldron very much supports this application. When the original special exception was approved, it included a proffer that created art space, which is now home to Creative Cauldron and to Falls Church Arts. Indeed, the proffer was a critical component that drove approval of the application. To ensure that art space continues to thrive and to carry out the intentions embodied in the original proffer, we ask that you consider the following four requests. One, in exchange for granting this request to amend the special exception, require the Transwestern assume responsibility for the real estate taxes through the duration of Creative Cauldron's tenure in art space. The terms of the original proffer enable Transwestern to pass through the responsibility to pay the real estate property taxes, currently $6,558 a year. Creative Cauldron is a not-for-profit organization. We do not own the space. Relief from this real estate property tax obligation would allow us to better focus on our primary mission of making the arts affordable and accessible through our arts education and performance programming. Let me illustrate what $6,500 means to Creative Cauldron. We can keep the doors of art space open for one month. Rent, utilities, insurance, and maintenance charges alone cost us around $6,000 per month. $6,500 paid the six professional actors who performed in the four-weekend run of our Helen Hayes Award-recommended production of Nevermore this past October. $6,500 would pay for the printing and the postage for five mailings of brochures or postcards to promote our performances and our classes. For us to bring in $6,500 means selling an additional 433 tickets at a price of $15 each. $6,500 means 130 additional individual contributions at an average of $50 apiece. We believe that the $6,500, approximately $6,500 a year, is not a huge ask of Transwestern, it is a huge amount to Creative Cauldron. Number two, expand and enforce the agreement governing the use of the retail parking spaces at Pearson Square. I'm thrilled to hear that this will be addressed. There has been a continuing problem with the retail parking spaces being used by the residents, and with the addition of a new business, it's imperative the retail parking spaces be reserved for the business patrons as required by the site plan. Number three, restrict the use of the corridor running the length of the back of the commercial area to the businesses and not allow it to be open to residential foot traffic. We've had conversations with Transwestern about the noise, our performance is being interrupted, and putting in place this door, and we absolutely support that. Number four, modify the annual escalation rate for the rent and common area maintenance or CAM charges for art space. The original proffer states that the lessy of art space pay an annual 3% escalation in both the rent and the CAM charges. We ask that the wording be changed to state that the annual escalation rate will be 3% or the Consumer Price Index, whichever is lower. In this way, the proffer will react to changing economic conditions, which it does not now. Creative Cauldron is looking forward to the addition of Body Dynamics to the Falls Church business community, and we believe that Body Dynamics would be a great neighbor to Creative Cauldron. We ask that the city structure a special exception amendment that considers the interests of everyone involved. Thank you for hearing our request.
Thank you, Gina. I guess, Mr. Fuller, I guess my question is, it sounds like on number one, the staff isn't really sure what we can actually put in in regards to real estate taxes. Number two, it sounds like that, I mean, is that something that could even be in a special exception? Because their retail parking, is that enforcement would be up to them?
That enforcement's really internal, but if it continues to be an issue, then it can be enforced by the city, because the site plan lays out that separation of the parking spaces, and so, that is ultimately enforceable by us, but it should be an internal solution initially, so.
So, it's enforceable by us right now with the current language?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, but that's something where we could step in if it isn't enforced?
Yes.
And then, in terms of the corridor restriction, that, again, that would be up to the facility.
That would, that would be purely up to the current owners, and, yep.
And I guess the last thing is the 3% or CPI, whichever is lower for the CAM charges, and I'm not sure, is that an operational thing? Again, is that something we could, is that something you guys have looked at as something that could be added to special?
I mean, that was what was approved in the original special exception as part of the lease terms, so, I mean, that language is in there very specifically from day one, the original special exception approval. It could be, I mean, it was the language that was approved at the time by the council, so that is something that you could look at. I know, right now, the average lease in the first four space of Spectrum and Byron and so forth is averaging like in the $30, $30 a square foot, but they started off at 10, I guess, with two escalations, probably at 3%.
It's our third year.
So, they're coming up on 19% potentially, you know, with 3% increases, you know, each year, potentially.
So, that, actually, so then, that means in a, of all these, the one about the 3% or CPI is the one we actually could probably change the easiest, because it is, the language is already in the special exception?
Well, let me, let me, I mean, that was converted to a lease that is now in place for this user, so that would be an additional consideration on that.
Okay.
Well, I actually had a question on the 3% as well. The letter says that after 2014, the 3% cap is removed entirely. Does that mean it can go up at a much faster rate, or it can't go up at all? Which, I mean, is the 3% in effect protecting them until 2014, and then all bets are off?
Yeah, the cap's gone, and it's market rates, potentially. I mean, but, you know, it's negotiable in that case, but, you know, at that point, there's no more city control. I mean, it's been set up for, you know, this term.
And so, is there, is your current lease through 2014? Is that where the 2014 comes in?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at the lease and the proffer. I can't answer that directly.
My understanding, I think, this terminology was done, it would have been 10-year period, so I think the intent was to have this discount available for 10 years for an art space tenant. That was the intent on the original special exception.
It's 2004.
Yeah.
Okay, because I've got, I think, the same problem Melissa has. I'm trying to figure out, you know, how we do, what we can do, and where we can actually do something, because when I looked in here and it talked about basically amending the proffer, I mean, you can't really do that at this point, can you? I mean, in effect, you'd be asking them to do a new proffer by agreeing to make changes, but...
Well, and then, you've got a legal document, a lease, in place, and so, you've got those two pieces, so, I mean, we're going to look at all the options, and, you know, we'll have our attorney look at it, and, you know, the applicant has an attorney in place as well, so at this point, I, you know, we haven't finished exploring the options and to what extent that we have those, because we've just gotten this material last week.
So, the planning commission, at this point, we could just strongly recommend that the staff continue to look at options to see if there's a way to provide tax relief, and just, I guess, you're going to have to look at the lease and look at the way the language is to see if the, if we could even suggest that the 3% be changed.
Yeah, I think on the number one and number four, you know, you could give guidance on both of those, and, you know, we could take that in consideration, and then, the council will as well, based on, you know, what the options that staff is able to sort of figure out and put on the table.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Couple of things, you know, I know that we're looking to retrofit something that happened in 2004, which obviously was not well, well-handled on the city's part, as far as having a nonprofit proffer, and then they're paying city property tax. It just doesn't make too much sense to me, and I guess, you know, we should have handled that way back then. So, I know that in meeting with Mr. Snyder and Marty Meserve, myself, we had a long meeting Friday afternoon, we were looking at all kinds of other options, and I think that it is being brought up at this point. We really, really, really want Body Dynamics and everything like that, but we're trying to maybe have a little leverage here to say, hey, Transwestern, or whoever it is now, let's take another look at this, because I understand the build-out was far more extensive than originally thought, and...
More expensive, with a P, expensive.
Expensive and extensive and all kinds of things, of things that probably should have been, again, in writing as far as the box, and, you know, we've learned a lot from all of our past, you know, negotiations with things, and I know this came in at the last minute, too, under that negotiation, so it might not have been really, you know, looked at as closely as it should have. And on the other hand, I want to point, now, I'm not really too sure, are you representing Body Dynamics, or are you representing Transwestern or whoever?
The property owner.
You're representing the property owner? Okay, because we've, you know, on the other hand of things, we've granted four special exception reversals over the past, you know, just a couple of years even, and tried to work with the property owners, and I really want to get the message out that I think that Transwestern or whoever really needs to start looking at this and be a little bit more lenient or cooperative in this, in this manner, because of the fact that, you know, we have done four changes, which is kind of unusual, but we've done it. But I just feel like if we make a motion, I would like it to refer to all five points and Marty's letter, and keep the one in about the parking, and keep the one in about the corridor, because I want it in writing that that's what we're seeking, and for the protection of Body Dynamics, to make sure that they have that protection, because you're saying it, but we don't see it, as far as in writing or anything. You're saying they're going to change the parking, you're saying they're going to put the door up, but until, you know, that, I would prefer keeping that in writing, along with our motion, for protection of both Body Dynamics and hopefully to make some more progress with Creative Cauldron. Jim, do you think there's any possibility of doing that? Do you think it's...
I think it's, as Gary said, we've got to, we've got to have the internal conversation. As you mentioned, we had a very good meeting Friday where we learned more about the situation that Creative Cauldron's in. Certainly, we agree that the, and one of the good arguments for bringing someone like Body Dynamics is, is the synergy between these two. As you look around the country, there are lots of these different cultural and arts groups, they typically have some support and subsidy from local government or through some other organization, and, you know, that's how they're able to operate, and so, we understand that by hearing what was talked about on Friday, that this is a serious situation for Creative Cauldron, so we've got to talk internally, I think, with the manager and staff to see what are some answers or solutions. Certainly, for the applicant, it's something which if they, the owner, if they are, something they could volunteer, Gary had mentioned earlier the idea of maybe opening up more flexibility on the balance of the space as an idea as well. We haven't talked specifically about that, providing more flexibility so that the space could be more readily, more flexibly leased. I don't know if that would be something that would help them in terms of rethinking some of the current arrangements with the Creative Cauldron or not, but it's certainly something that could, we could ask them about.
I think my wish is right now would just be to, you know, approve this and have language included that would be a strong signal for everybody to sit down and do some talking about this, and also a strong signal to get more in writing in the lease for Body Dynamics about the parking and about the hallway. You know, words are one thing, words written down are another, so I would like to see that, but I would like to refer to these in our motion.
I think Gary's, the point at the beginning of his presentation, that we're looking for guidance from the commission that will help council and staff. That's an important part of this. We certainly believe that Body Dynamic, in conjunction with Creative Cauldron, is going to really help this area, and we're excited about having other businesses being able to fill the vacant space, so we'd like to make sure this is a positive step forward rather than steps forward and a step backward.
Absolutely, and, you know, I'm very excited about the idea of Body Dynamics coming, but I think we're also seeing this as a toehold a little bit for some more negotiations, some more talking with the company and with Mr. Danforth.
May I address some of the comments that have come up?
Uh-huh. Please.
Okay. I recognize there's this conversation about whether or not the property owner should provide more support for Creative Cauldron, and I guess I just urge the commission, before you do make a recommendation, that the responsibility lay with the property owner, I think there should be a bigger picture question about who should be responsible for providing more support, because the property owner has provided a significant... because the property owner has provided a significant amount of support over the years to Creative Cauldron. There is some mention of the additional build-out costs. And I believe that created, excuse me, that the property owner paid more build-out costs than it was originally obligated to. I believe that when the, the initial fundraising for Creative Cauldron, when the goals weren't met, the property owner stepped in and provided a loan to Creative Cauldron. So it's done things over the years to assist Creative Cauldron. And it's going to, it wants to see Creative Cauldron continue, continue to do well. The fact that it gave it a loan, it needs the Creative Cauldron to do well. So Creative Cauldron's in a position to repay the loan. So in some ways, their interests are tied together there. So it has, it has worked with Creative Cauldron. It'll still continue to do that. I think there needs to be a bigger picture question about whose responsibility is it to provide more assistance to Creative Cauldron? Should it be the community as a whole or should it just be its property owner? And also I recognize that the property owner has been in a number of times for multiple modifications to the special exception conditions. However, I'd just point out that in coming in with this request, the property owner is not asking to be put in a position that would be better than where they were in 2004. They're just trying to get to the point where they can lease their ground floor space and get to the actual position where they expected to be in 2004. So I think it may be a little bit different situation if they were coming in and saying, hey, will you give us some sort of approval that will allow us to bring in more revenue than we originally anticipated? And I think it may be more appropriate to have a discussion about, okay, well, if they're going to be in a better position than they originally were when we originally had this deal, maybe we should ask for a little bit more out of them. But they're just trying to get back to where they thought they would be, which is to be able to, to be able to rent the space. Because it's been, it's been a difficult condition to fulfill with the, the service retail on the ground floor. I think it was the EDA commission to study back about in 2004 and what kind of retail space or what kind of commercial tenants would be appropriate for the space. And I think that was a, maybe it was Retail Compass was the company. I think what Retail Compass came back and said is that it's going to be service uses that are appropriate for the space. And even with that, even with that report, I think the city council decided, well, let's go ahead and try to get a more traditional retail in the space. And the property owners have tried to do that and it's just been difficult. So they're just trying to make the space work. And they want to see Creative Cauldron succeed. But I just want to point out that they have done things over the years to support it. And they still, they do want to see it be supported and succeed going forward. Thank you.
Hey, could I just point out something?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, you know, I realize about the loan, and that was because of the whole HVAC system needing to be put in. And again, what we're going to have to think of in the future when we approve things is have a little bit more of a build-out with, within, you know, commercial spaces and future properties. Because, you know, an HVAC system, you can't take it with you. When your lease is gone, you know, the, the building then owns the HVAC system. So that's a little screwy. But, but anyway, I think, you know, we've learned and we have to keep learning and make things a little bit better as we get going.
No, I agree. And the restaurant that was in the space that Wong's is now in, in Broadway, they, they lost their business over the cost of the build-out because they weren't able to sustain the debt that they picked up. So build-out is, is a very costly thing. And I will just say, I mean, I think everyone expected that space to be filled. And I think that the economic downturn didn't actually help the situation either. But it, you have to recognize, a lot of those spaces were basically being leased without any build-out at all. And so it is, it's a startup cost for people to go into those types of spaces. And I think that, I agree with Ms. Hockenberry, that makes it hard to lease them because the first tenant going in is going to take the most of the costs. Did anyone else have any? Mr. Lawrence?
Just one question for Mr. Danforth and also for Ms. Gamboa. Since the work session, there were changes to the resolution. I assume since we didn't hear any, you don't have any problems with the changes that were proposed?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I think the changes were to make it more specific to Body Dynamics mostly.
Oh, yeah, no, I just, it's.
So that that 20-year lease goes with them.
Okay, not seen any other? Mr. Wodisca?
Well, I'm not sure where the planning commission is heading on, on this motion. I'm of the opinion that we should not include this language into the motion. It's certainly sympathetic to Creative Cauldron and their financial issues. I'm just not comfortable putting in something that is in direct conflict with an existing lease. I'm also, while I understand this is the process that Body Dynamics needs to go through because of the designation that we put on it as a service use, even that issue alone, I'm somewhat not convinced this would have met it anyway in terms of being a retail use. And so to put, I'm very supportive of what Body Dynamics' application is saying. I'm pleased that in the last couple of years, we've added enough fitness places to compete with our pizza places.
Nail salons.
I mean, in the last couple of years, we've added, you know, four major fitness facilities. So I don't want to put any impediments to that support based on Creative Cauldron's lease issues and their financial issues. So that's my opinion. I do really want to support, I plan on supporting Body Dynamics' application. I just don't want it, I'm hoping the planning commission doesn't include that in the, in the motion in any meaningful way. If there's a, hey, can you look at this, do some further research? I'm certainly supportive of that, but, no, okay.
And I think we agree with you at the point. Mr. Lofterston?
I've, I've been working in nonprofits for over 12 years now. And I certainly love the arts. I worked for the Corcoran Gallery of Art for five years. I also started my career out in commercial real estate, so I can understand where that industry is coming from. And I guess I have sort of an equity question in that I know that there are other nonprofits that operate in the City of Falls Church. Do they pay real estate taxes? And if they do, then we're making an exception for one particular nonprofit as much as we love the arts. So I have, you know, I have misgivings about that. And so I would, and I think that, you know, that that should be looked at. And in that case, we're asking one particular property owner to really pay for the real estate taxes and not asking the other property owners in the City of Falls Church to do that. So I would have a misgiving with this as much as I do love the arts and as much as I sure support the nonprofit sector. So I would have problems having this language inserted in what we're doing here tonight as well.
Would you have, either of you have problems encouraging that staff look at this more to see if anything can be done?
Yeah.
Okay, I think part of the problem is we don't have, we obviously don't have the jurisdiction to, you know, make any decisions on any of this. So it's really how artfully we kick it down the road.
And I agree with John on that point. You know, I think that we've spoken to it. It's going to be in the minutes. We're asking staff to further really look at this. And we've certainly brought it to the forefront. And hopefully, something can be done with that.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I just, we all really support the Body Dynamics' application. We want to see them come in. It's a great fit for the city. We all support Creative Cauldron. We'd like to see them in a better situation. Specifically, especially with the parking and the corridor issues, those are things that the facility should be dealing with anyway, regardless. And it's for Body Dynamics' own, you know, good, too, to have it dealt with. If we don't have any more comments, I think we move on to a motion.
I'm chair. I move that the planning commission recommend approval to the city council of Resolution TR 11-43, Pearson Square, application number 20110961, and encourage the city council and staff to continue to examine ways to concretely address concerns raised by Creative Cauldron in its letter to the city council dated November 30th, 2011.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we have any comments or discussion? Can we get any roll call then, please?
Mr. Lofterston?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. G. And so I guess it's back to you, Mr. Fuller, as you guys look at the memo and look at the issues to see if there's something you can do. And we encourage the council to really consider some changes if there's, if it's a possibility of it.
Yeah, maybe on the director's report, I can provide some written information and an update on this later on for you.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Gina. Okay, we have no other business?
Good motion.
We can move to the approval of minutes? Let's see. Does anyone have any changes or comments on the minutes from November 21st?
Move adoption of the minutes from November 21st?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are passed. Can I get a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, it's passed. And we are now adjourned. Thank you.